I'd like to call the October 13th, 2011, meeting of the Williamsburg City Council to order. Ms. Scott, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newsom.
Here.
Mr. Pons.
Here.
Mayor Holman.
Here.
Mr. Friling.
Here.
Mr. Foster.
Here. First order of business is council minutes from the meetings of September 8th and the special meeting of September 7th. Does anyone have any additions or corrections?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the approval of the minutes of September 8th and September 7th.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please? Ms. Scott?
Ms. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Mr. Friling.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Next order of business is matters of special privilege, and we have two today. And the first, I would ask Chief Slogee, please meet me at the podium. As many of you know, Chief Slogee has served the city for 35 years. Too young for that. And we did a ceremony earlier recognizing service to the city, but we wanted to do something special for you and for your service to the city. So, there's something under this box. It's not a public... This handgun is a Smith &amp; Wesson Model 64, .38 caliber police revolver. This is the first handgun that Dave Slogee was issued by the Williamsburg Police Department when he started working as a police officer. He carried this firearm for 18 years, over half his career, until the police department moved from revolvers to semi-automatics. Dave, this is a gift to you and appreciation of all the importance. This box was done by somebody who also knows it well, and I think he's going to help carry it out.
May I see it?
Yes, please. Let's get closer to him.
A lot of people don't know this, but wow, that's just neat. I can't wait to go home and look at it. When I started here in 1976, I was too young to carry a gun. And they put me in uniform, and I recall specifically going to UVB O'Monosello to a bank robbery with my magical nightstick. And about two weeks after that, I was issued the same gun. So, it's... All I'd say is thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Jody and Mr. Cuddell. I'm really excited, too, because my mother, who brought me here as a little boy, Sunday afternoon drives, Norma Slogee, who's also my favorite City of Williamsburg resident. She's here, and of course, my lovely wife, who's given me support throughout the years. But I... As everybody here that works for the city knows, we all love working for the City of Williamsburg. We have excellent city government, excellent leadership. And I'm just as proud of the staff for all the city that works here, and to see men and women of the Williamsburg Police Department here, it really touches me, and I appreciate you all being here, too. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Should I get that now?
I think somebody had a hand in this.
Andy, that is beautiful.
The second matter of special privilege... Our second matter of special privilege is one of the times when we have an opportunity to recognize one of our own, and this is the award for excellence in service to Williamsburg. And Ms. Scott, would you come forward, please? Let me read the proclamation. "The City of Williamsburg takes pleasure in recognizing D. Scott for excellence in service to Williamsburg. D. Scott has worked and cared for the City of Williamsburg with diligence and dedication since 1991, serving as Planning Department Secretary from 1994 to 2009, and as Clerk of Council since 2009. As Clerk of Council, D. flawlessly administers the process of city council, fulfilling the letter and spirit of the law and capturing a true record of city council proceedings. On behalf of city council, she acts as manager of the forwards and commission appointment process, custodian of adopted ordinances and resolutions, and guardian of all official city records. She also prepares meeting minutes and provides administrative support to the planning commission, architectural review board, and Board of Zoning Appeals. She maintains an outstanding rapport with all these public bodies. Her clear and accurate records of decisions and deliberations are of lasting importance to good governance in Williamsburg. D. is an exemplary role model for her colleagues and well-respected and appreciated by citizens of the Williamsburg community. Her kind and engaging personality ensures that every interaction with her is a pleasurable experience. D. is hereby recognized for her commitment to excellence in keeping with the best traditions of public service in the City of Williamsburg dated October 13th, 2011, and signed by me and Jackson Tullis. D. to the end." We know this is very special because this award comes from your peers, and that's really, really important. We are glad to see this.
Well, first of all, that doesn't sound like me. First of all, I wanted to thank you, Mayor, for being our mayor, and I just wanted to say that this really is a great honor, and I really do appreciate this hat and this words of appreciation. Well, thank you. Thank you very much. And I just want to thank a couple of people. I thought I'd found a great moment in this, but I know you don't want to hear that. But I do need to acknowledge a few people, and they are Sheila Christ and Reed Nestor and Carolyn Murphy, who through the years have guided me and trained me to be where I am today and encouraged me, and I thank you very much.
Along with proclamation, we also have something beautiful.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
It's times like these that make us all, I think, proud to be part of the City of Williamsburg, and the opportunity to recognize the people who work where the rubber meets the road in providing local government services is really important. So, thank you, D., and thank Dave. Our next order of business is public hearings, and we have one today. And this is the Virginia Transportation Enhancement Grant for improvements to Route 60 East in Williamsburg, James City County, and York County, which is proposed Resolution 11-14. Jody?
I will start with this introduction of the public hearing, and then I'm going to turn the formal presentation over to Landscape Superintendent Will Fidler, as well as Sandy Warner. At the June 6th City Council Work Session, Carlton Abbott presented a conceptual plan for improving Route 60 East corridor from Williamsburg to Busch Gardens. The Historic Triangle Collaborative has taken on the challenge to coordinate this project in cooperation with the City, James City County, and York County. A committee has been formed to refine the plan. The committee, led by Sandy Warner of the Historic Triangle Collaborative, and as I mentioned, Mr. Warner's here today, is comprised of staff from all three jurisdictions and from Colonial Williamsburg, Busch Gardens, Carlton Abbott, and partners. Our Landscape Superintendent Will Fidler is Williamsburg's representative on the committee. The committee is seeking approval from all three jurisdictions to proceed with a VDOT Transportation Enhancement Grant application that is due on November 1st. Will Fidler is taking the lead in coordinating the grant application's middle. If the grant is approved by VDOT, each jurisdiction will be responsible for funding their particular portion of the project. VDOT will reimburse the localities for 80 percent of the cost of the project. City Council will hold the single... One single public hearing on behalf of all three jurisdictions today prior to submitting the application on November 1st. So, I'm going to turn it over to Landscape Superintendent Will Fidler, who's going to give you more specific information on the proposed project.
Welcome, Will.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, City Council, as Mrs. Miller has explained, I'm not here today so much as a staff member of the city, but as a member of a larger committee. A committee that is seeking approval from City Council here today to apply for the grant that is due November 1st of this year. We are applying for a grant for the beautification of the Route 60 corridor. A corridor that stretches from Page Street Bridge down to the entrance of Busch Gardens. Corridor that stretches over three jurisdictions. Each jurisdiction, as Mrs. Miller said, has a representative on the committee. The committee is also made up of a representative from the Busch Gardens organization, from the Colonial Williamsburg group, and two landscape architects from the Carlton Abbott group, and finally, all of this is kind of led by Mr. Sandy Warner of the Historical Triangle Collaboration. Again, I'm going to mainly focus on what portions within the city. James City County and York County are also doing their own approval to proceed with the grant, even though all of this is falling under the City of Williamsburg sponsorship. This is a prime example of what we currently see within the city along the Route 60 corridor. As y'all all know, this is looking back towards Page Street Bridge, adjacent to the pastures there at the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation. Across the street is a typical example of the hotels there along the corridor. Again, not something that is very unattractive, not saying that at all. We're just looking at ways to enhance the appearance of the corridor, and I will go into some details of how some smaller things can do that. Before I start, I want to get off by saying that in no means did I come up with this drawings, information, so forth. Mr. Richard Wyatt and Mr. Doug Mettler over at the Carlton Abbott Group really spearheaded this in the drawings and in the details and evaluations. They put a lot of the work into it. I just got to force them, dawg, of coming in front of y'all today to pretty much go through examples of what they've come up with. Some of the things that we've identified within the urban portion, and the urban portion, of course, is within the city, is emphasis on detailed landscape planting, put more emphasis on pedestrian circulation along the corridor, with possibility of addition of a multipurpose trail, and then work with a very limited right-of-way. You know, as many of y'all know, the city right-of-way in that corridor is very narrow or just a few feet off the backside of the curb. So, it's very important that during this whole process, we work with the landowners that are adjacent to the corridor and working with them and making sure all of this comes Part of the project is focusing on using low landscape plantings to enhance and mitigate the views there along the corridor. Street tree plantings. Everybody falls in love with street tree plantings. They feel like it encompasses the corridor or the roadway, and really frames in the picture and gives it a aesthetic feel when you're going through along the road there. And then, we've got here a unified landscape scheme, but it's not so much just unified within the city, but also the overall picture is unified from Page Street Bridge all the way down to the Busch Gardens entrance, since it says, you know, kind of collaboration of all three jurisdictions in the historical triangle area. This is basically a good example of what the image we're, you know, hoping for here in the corridor and within the city. On the far left, you've got an image of the hotel. This is a perfect typical example of the hotels. They typically sit back off the road with a small parking lot area between the hotel and a green space, and then a very narrow green space between the parking lot and the corridor. Proposal on the left down here is to put in street tree plantings to kind of frame in the corridor and then put in some low plantings, not so much to screen the parking lot from the road or to screen the road from the parking lot, but just again to enhance some of the views as pedestrians were to move through that corridor. The second item is up in this middle picture. When these sidewalks were constructed, I'm sure they met all the standards. Standards have changed over time. You can see light poles are now in the sidewalk. You can see that different property owners have different lighting fixtures located there, and the sidewalk is concrete. Again, we were hoping to propose potentially brick or some combination of brick and concrete to bring out the Colonial Williamsburg feel, you know, along that corridor, move that lighting post back in the green space to where it's actually ADA accessible and up to VDOT standards, and then also try to unify the lighting along that corridor so that each different property owner doesn't have a different lighting setup. Everything is kind of uniform, and everybody kind of feels within the same, you know, historical feel. On the right side, you'll notice that the pasture area, we have a gravelled pathway that gets used quite a bit. The focus there was to move that path back off the road, do something with either brick, exposed aggregate, asphalt, something more similar to a multipurpose trail, and again, identify street tree planting in between the multipurpose trail and the road, and possibly some additional plantings between the multipurpose trail and the pasture. But, you know, we're not going... We didn't want to put a lot of emphasis on a lot of plantings between the pasture and the multipurpose trail for the fact that it's not an ugly scene whatsoever. It's kind of the image of Williamsburg with the horse pasture and the fencing and so forth, with some type of planting in there. As Mrs. Miller said, it is a reimbursement program, but the... If selected for the grant, we will get 80 percent reimbursed. 20 percent will be out-of-pocket expense. Of the entire three phases that Carlton Abbott Partners put together on the conceptual cost estimate, it comes out to just under $900,000. That is all three phases put together. 20 percent of that number would be just under $180,000 that the city would have to expect to come out of pocket. Now, in applying for the grant, if we are selected, we probably will not get... Well, we're pretty confident saying we won't get the whole four... Little $4 million for the whole project. We're pretty confident knowing that. So, we're going to break the project down into three phases. It really depends on the funding from VDOT. It may be broken down into four or five phases, depending on how much money they would like to allocate to the project. But from a conservative standpoint, we broke it down into three. In the one-to-ten... I mean, one-to-five-year short-term phase, we were just under a half million dollars for our portion that we wanted to do, just under $100,000 for our 20 percent match. In the next 10 years, you know, $130,000 for our work, just over $25,000 for the 20 percent match, and then long-term, 100... Just under $150,000 for 20 years out, just on a $30,000 for our percentage that we need to match. One note that was in the total $900,000 number was one-third of the surveying fees. That's the engineering, field surveying fees, and associated costs. The committee decided as a group that instead of trying to break it up into percentages and get into that whole ordeal, that since we are in this together, that every jurisdiction, York County, James City, and Williamsburg, would just take a third of the fees. And of course, those fees are still eligible for the 80 percent reimbursement. So, our third would be just under $150,000 with just over $28,000 reimbursed. Now, before I ask Mr. Warner to come up here and before we turn over the question to you all, I thought it might be a good idea just to highlight what James City County's proposal is and what York County's, and see how theirs combines with ours, how everything is, you know, consistent all the way through. This is a typical cut of James City County where you see the railroad tracks are adjacent to the highway, very close to the highway. You've got four lanes with a middle turn lane, and then the sidewalks right along the curb. In James City County, we're proposing to do a small fence, ornamental fence, similar to what you see behind Matthew Whaley along Lafayette Street, some low plantings along the railroad tracks, mainly because we're restricted to what CXX will allow us to do. And then, a very wise proposal was to take out the turn lane and turn it into a median. Still, of course, having sections cut out to where people could turn into hotels and local businesses, but thought with street trees that would kind of, you know, define the two different lanes, the eastbound and the westbound lane. Again, focus on pedestrian safety, moving the sidewalk or a multipurpose trail back off the road with some plantings in between that and the highway. And then, again, where it allows, you know, around hotels and so forth, maybe doing some enhancement of landscaping material between the multipurpose trail, sidewalk, and the This is just a typical cut of what the medians were proposed to look like along the James City County corridor, something that we typically see or currently see here in Williamsburg, right there on Richmond Road. It's pretty much the idea of what we had in mind. York County's... This is a good example of what York County's section is proposing. York County already has... They already have a lot of the medians already defined. There's nothing really planned in a lot of them, but they're already defined there. So, a lot of work for them is just going to be landscape planting. Some planting that's going to be along the railroad tracks to separate the railroad from the highway, adding some plantings in the existing medians they have there, and then addressing some landscape plantings between Route 60 and the businesses. This shows here Busch Gardens, and I just want to comment on Busch Gardens. When they came into this group, they took off with it, ran, and they decided they're not going to wait for the grant, which is great. They say that they are all for this, and, you know, they're starting to get the wheels turning for them to just do it on their own. And, you know, they're real supportive of this project, but they want to get a start now versus, you know, wait through potentially a year, year and a half out. So, they're always leading the way on us. With that being said, I'm going to ask Mr. Warner to come up and just address what the other localities are doing currently.
Thank you, Will.
Thank you, Will. Mr. Mayor, members of council, Ms. Miller, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Sandy Warner. I'm the Chair of the Historic Triangle Collaborative. And first of all, I want to thank the city for its leadership, specifically the city manager and Will for being willing to be the lead sponsor among the three jurisdictions. Because it's such a unique effort, of three jurisdictions coming together, the process requires one sponsor, and that one sponsor is the one who holds the one necessary public hearing. This public hearing is for input. It is not for an action on behalf of the three jurisdictions. Each jurisdiction will then take a separate action on their endorsement of the project. Also, this is a competitive project. The Transportation Enhancement Grant Program is federal dollars that cannot be used for public repair or highway widening. It is specifically for transportation enhancement projects. The city, historically, had a very successful one. York Transportation Center is... Was a beneficiary of a transportation enhancement grant. James City County, the preservation of the Norwich Depot, was the beneficiary of a transportation enhancement grant. And in York County, some of the Riverwalk, again, was a beneficiary of a transportation enhancement grant. So, again, we are in a competition. The deadline to file is November 1st of this year. It goes up against existing grants that are coming up for another funding cycle, as well as new grants, such as this one. It's highly competitive, and there will be a process that will go on for a number of months until next spring, we find out, did this project qualify. Indications from representatives of the Virginia Department of Transportation are because we are so unique in bringing together three jurisdictions into one regional effort, their eyes lit up when we made this proposal for input. After you take... Have the public hearing today and take whatever action is on your agenda, York County will take action on the 18th of this month and James City County on the 25th of this month. In between those actions, the Hampton Roads Metropolitan Planning Organization, which deals with transportation matters, will have this on their agenda to endorse our application as well as others in the region. And the Hampton Roads Transportation Technical Advisory Committee has already given a favorable endorsement to the total organization. We will also be, as an organization, briefing our respective members of the Hampton Roads Commonwealth Transportation Board, because those transportation board members have a great deal to say on which projects move forward from within their own region. The HTC has also held on September 28th a briefing by Carlton Abbott and Partners for property owners in the corridor, as well as interested parties such as the Williamsburg Land Conservancy and members of the various garden clubs. And we've also been, over the last number of months, involved with the CXX Railroad leadership, and they are favorably endorsing the project and have worked with us relative to many things that they feel can be accommodated in their right-of-way, such as the ornamental fencing, such as you all have in Williamsburg. In some ways, you notice lots of crossings there where they're concerned about individuals crossing the tracks, putting themselves in danger. They also have some standards on the type of plantings, and also, we've been dealing with VDOT, particularly Busch Gardens, on the types of plantings that can be put in that do not endanger the motoring traffic. So, I'm prepared, as is Will, to answer any questions. I'm happy to answer any questions on the specific project before you open your public hearing, and obviously, Will, as your Landscape Superintendent, can answer specifically to the city. Again, it's been a privilege to be before you this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sandy, and thank you, Will, and Jody as well. Before we open the public hearing, I'll come to council for any questions they might have of Sandy or Will or...
I have a couple. And Mr. Warner, these might be for you, but I'd be happy to take the answer from your Mr. Fidler. With the... I'm sure it's competitive. Anytime money's involved, there seems to be a lot of competition for it. When this... When VDOT makes their decision on the grant, do they say, "We will award a certain amount of money to the project? We will fund 80 percent of these components of it, or we will give you this amount, but it can only be 40 percent of the whole thing"? I mean, how does that work?
They will award you a number of dollars for what they believe can be done, and then they'll say, "We will fund your entire project over a number of years." What they do is after you spend your first year's project money, they then look for your success or your outcomes. Did you do what you said you were going to do with that allocation? Then you go back and compete in the next year for money to carry that forward. So, the money you get is the first... It's just for that first phase.
Okay.
These are multi-phase projects.
But is it 80 percent or nothing?
They will grant you 80 percent of what they agreed that is the project.
Okay. It's just up to the localities to make sure they provide at least 20 percent.
20 percent. That's the arrangement.
What if all three jurisdictions don't adopt... What if all three jurisdictions don't adopt other resolutions?
Well, we have been dealing with all three jurisdictions, and I stand before you to say, all three are committed to put it before their governing bodies. And the indication is from the leadership of those other jurisdictions that they are going to endorse the project as a regional project.
Okay. And while it wouldn't be expected, what if the MPO similarly didn't support or endorse? Does that significantly impact...
No, the project would still go forward with or without the MPO, but obviously, as of a week or so ago, indication is the MPO will endorse these various projects. And remember, this is across Hampton Roads, so Hampton Roads wants to get its fair share of these enhancement grants.
So whatever work then is submitted would have to be staged in a way that if funding was only received for the first year, the first two or three years, it doesn't leave work out there hanging that would be necessarily complete.
Going back to continue the project as is totally envisioned, constantly competing for this money.
Okay. Thank you.
Scott?
I have one question in regard to the phases. Talking about one to five years and a certain allotment of money, do you do a little bit along the entire corridor with that money, or do you break it down into sections?
There's, the first phase includes all three jurisdictions.
Okay.
And obviously, for James City Counties particularly, if you saw in the one picture, there's a ton of overhead power line carried on poles buried in the concrete, you know, mounted there. That's heavy dollar value, and that's in one of the out phases.
Gotcha.
We're going to try to handle that low-hanging fruit expression, you know, do what we can to start getting some of this landscaping, the multi-use trail. And you have already have a willing partner so far in this corridor with what you have done with Riverside Hospital. They have already made a significant improvement, and it just happens to be Carlton Abbott is also the architect, landscape architect for Riverside. So a lot of what you see in that portion of James City County is a direct reflection on the county investing in that project. We hope that, again, get it started, start to see some results, become competitive in that second year, that third year, however long it takes. Once you get the grant, there's a lot more to do. As Will said, we, there's easements, there's design work, there's the interactions with the railroad, there's the interactions with VDOT. We don't want to harm any of the hospitality industry if down the road there are some medians. You did a great job with your medians on Richmond Road. You can still access your businesses. And we want to make sure that if the medians are in for traffic calming and beautification, that they don't impact on any of the existing businesses. So there's a lot of work to be done once we get through this competition.
Thank you, Sandy. And thank the Historic Triangle Collaborative for taking this initiative on. I think without that, that group kind of banding together for this type of project, it may not get to the table, and certainly as far as it's gotten. In terms of the phases and the grant process, right now we have a $4 million total, and obviously, that's today's dollars, that, you know, who knows what it might cost in the future. I guess, did you budget in some escalations for cost into the future?
You're not allowed, what you can do is only what you know today.
Okay.
And again, of that $4 million, the majority of that $4 million is the undergrounding of the power lines in that James City section of the corridor. There's some obviously in your section, but that's the biggest part of that $4 million.
Sure. Now, when you, the first phase is a million dollars, well, that doesn't matter. The, how did you prioritize what would get done? You know, for example, I might think that putting the medians in sooner than later would be best money spent.
Well, the priorities, you know, again, it's the three sections, and each of the jurisdictions said, "This is, this is our priority based on what we believe will be the available funding for our 20% match."
Okay.
And the medians are probably a little more complicated in some ways, not because of the architecture or the landscaping. It's just you've got to deal with VDOT and a lot of different studies on turning movements. You know, if you take out that, that lane for turning, does that create other problems? So I think we put off some of the really high-priced, more difficult ones that require a lot more engineering and coordination. Again, trying to, let's get started on some of the things we know we can accomplish in a timely fashion to show that we're really off and running.
Sure. And is that kind of the same answer for why we budgeted a 20-year timeframe versus, say, estimating doing it in 10 years?
I don't think it's going to go out as far as 20. But again, it's, it's all these other studies that have to be done. As you know from some of your other projects, there's environmental studies, there's the VDOT studies. And so it just takes time, and that's one of the frustrations I can tell you from my previous life, is the process to get to where you actually see shovel-ready is a long time. There's going to be lots of engineering requirements and, and design work needs to be done, assuming, again, we're successful in the competition. But we have a great track record. York Transportation Center, Norwich Depot, and Riverwalk showed that these three jurisdictions have the capacity to do projects, and I think it makes a very competitive thing that we allied in this regional project.
Thank you. Well, as you know, it is a central corridor for all three jurisdictions and one that hasn't seen the attention that it's, that it needs, should have had over the last few years, particularly, you know, sooner we can get it done, the better. But thank you so much for your time.
Well, thank you, sir.
I guess one thing, back to Doug's question about the timing. I mean, to the extent you get funding and have success, that can speed up the, the timing process too. So in fact, these are just, you know, guestimates of where we might be. But in fact, I think because the decision to, as you said, pick the low-hanging fruit, if we can get some things moving and get some success, then that may speed up some of those future time periods as well.
Yes. And one of the unfortunate things in this grant application process is all that private investment by Busch Gardens cannot be counted as in-kind for the grant. And any of the investment that Colonial Williamsburg has made in taking down the D.D. Corral and Ben &amp; Jerry's and cleaning up that property cannot be used as an in, as an in-kind service as this grant. If they had waited and waited and waited, maybe then, but, so anything that the existing businesses can do to help themselves as we go through the process, taking a look at some of the examples of the, of the landscaping and some of the plant materials, people can start to do that, and obviously, we'll be trying to work with them with technical support.
Great, thank you.
And just to follow up on that, even though they may not be counted as an in-kind contribution or towards any degree of the municipal match, do they lend some weight or credibility to the overall application project?
Yes, sir, absolutely. We can show, and we will be showing the CTV members, what we've already done as the three jurisdictions in that, and what property owners are doing themselves. I mean, many of the hospitality venues have already invested in landscaping. And obviously, the more we can do, while this is all in progress, the better off it is for the future.
Any further questions?
Riverside too, I assume, is all part of that.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Okay, thank you very much, Sandy and Will and Jody. With that, I'll turn to the public hearing and open the public hearing and ask anyone who wishes to address the issue to please come forward. Yes, sir.
I'm Don Cherry. I'm a local dentist. Also, I have...
Yeah, would you please stand at the podium and again, give us, that, that mic will pick up just fine. You don't need to hold it.
I'm a local dentist in the area here. I've served on the Historic Area Bicycle Advisory Committee for about 15 years. When James City County had Riverside present this project to us about two years ago, we discussed, we asked Riverside to look at downsizing that road and doing this conceptual-type plan. And I applaud you for what you've done, and the plan looks very good. But I would request that you even consider going one step further and putting, just have one lane of traffic on both sides of the road as it is in the city, all the way out to the 711. And you could do that based upon, the University of Michigan study says that a three-lane road will accommodate up to 22,000 vehicles per day. So if we could just put one lane on both sides with a center turn lane where you have it proposed right now, I think that would be a much better project. You could have wider plantings in the middle, and you could put nice bike paths on both sides of it. And we asked Riverside to look at this, along with the county, years ago, two years ago. And I don't think they ever got too far with it, to tell you the truth, because I haven't heard anything else about it. But that's one thing I would like to ask this committee to take a look at and see if that can be done, because I'm sure that the traffic count is not anywhere near 20,000 vehicles a day on that road between the 711 and the city limits. Am I right, Dan? The last time I looked at it, I think it was about less than 12,000. So we could really enhance this project even better and have wider plantings in there. If you, essentially, you're going to eliminate two lanes of traffic, so you can make that center lane even wider.
Dr. Cherry, if I could ask you to address council on this, we're having the public hearing. Thank you very much.
And put, and put bike, and put bike paths on both sides with a lane going each way. Sorry.
No, that's okay. Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else wish to address council on this, this matter? If not, I'll close the public hearing and come back to council for discussion and action. Mr. Friling?
As we all commented when Mr. Abbott made his presentation, I guess back in June, there's a lot to really appreciate and admire about this project and the work that's going into it, particularly the ambition to tackle something of this scope and to bring the resources together, to be willing to take the time and do it correctly. It might not be perfect yet. It might, there might be some opportunities to improve it along the way, and I'm sure folks will be considering that. But the one thing that really struck me as I was listening to Mr. Fidler and Mr. Warner was our conversation on Monday. Mr. Mayor, as you were describing the Vision Project, and one of the common themes that came through was people really wishing there was more collaboration between local government. And I can't think of a more remarkable example of the three local governments coming together, partnering with local private institutions and private business to do something collectively that none of them could do individually, and to bring in state and federal support, at least make the effort to bring that in, is to me very encouraging and a symbol of a lot of the good that does happen that maybe we don't always appreciate as much as we could. Can we do more? Sure, we always can. But I think this is, this is just a great example of that sort of collaboration.
Great, thank you. Scott?
I'm good. Cherry?
I had the same thought as Mr. Friling while I was hearing it. It's just what we were talking about on Monday, and we need to do it. It's a good project. I hope we get the money.
Doug?
I have no comments. Thank you.
Okay. I think you've got a very supportive city council, and again, I want to thank Carlton Abbott and Associates. I think they provide the...
Do we need a resolution?
Yep. I'm going to come back for action in just a second. But I think Carlton Abbott and Associates have really provided some real inspiration to this. I think the Historic Triangle Collaborative pushing this forward, and I think the three jurisdictions all being open to this, and Will and the committee that has worked on this has been terrific. So again, back to Mr. Friling's point, this is collaboration at its best. So with that, I'll, if anyone wishes to make a motion, I'll take it.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move that the city council approved resolution 11-14 endorsing the Route 60 East corridor improvement enhancement grant project.
Second. I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Newton?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Harmon?
Aye.
Mr. Friling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Again, thank you, Jody and Sandy and Will for being here today for this. We have a number of reports today, and there are several people who wish to speak to some of those issues that we're going to deal with in those reports. So with council's permission, I would have a brief open forum to allow people who wish to speak to one of these issues to do so before council takes action. Is that acceptable?
Yep.
Okay. With that, I have one speaker's card. We'll have, this open forums are times when anybody may address the city council on any item. For this purpose, since we have some, some specific reports, I'll ask that anyone who wishes to address city council do so. I have one speaker's card. If I could do that first, Mr. Daniel Page, if you would state your name and address, and we, our guidelines are to keep remarks to about three minutes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and Ms. Newton. I'm here today to talk about the proposed ordinance 11-18. The city council is examining their firearms ordinance today to bring it into compliance with state law, specifically 15.2-915. I think the council has rightly recognized that the code needs to be changed, but looking at what they're proposing to change it to, it doesn't solve all of the problems with the current code. I'm speaking not of policy problems, but of legal problems. 15.2-915 states that localities are not allowed to enact certain types of firearms ordinances. They're not allowed to enact ordinances that govern the purchase, possession, transfer, ownership, carrying, storage, or transportation of firearms or of ammunition. And the proposed ordinance fixes quite a few things with the previous ordinance, but the proposed ordinance still regulates, it says that, "No person other than authorized personnel shall carry any dangerous or deadly weapons of any description in any public recreation facility except a firearm legally in the possession of an individual carrying said firearm." So it goes on from there. 15.2-915 doesn't allow that language, "except a firearm legally in the possession of the individual carrying said firearm." If an individual illegally carries a firearm, he should be subject to those laws that make it illegal. But city council and the city of Williamsburg cannot make it illegal. And so this ordinance doesn't quite work. I've given each of you a small packet that has some proposed language that I think would go about as far as, as you're allowed to under state law. The packet doesn't include one thing that you can do, and you can regulate the discharge of firearms. So I would, I would request that you each look at those, and if you have any questions, I think that will, those would limit your liability, get rid of the conflict of law, and make sure that you comply with state law.
Great. Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Page. We appreciate that. And I think this shall end this. If anyone else wishes to address council on any item for the report, I would ask you to please come forward at this time. And then I think there are some parents here from Berkeley School who wish to speak, and we'll make that opportunity rather than have you wait until the end of the meeting.
I'm sorry, am I mistaken when you said open forum? This would be for the cards for public comment?
We normally have an open forum at the end of the meeting. Because we have a number of reports, and they're, one of the speakers wished to speak to one of the issues that those reports are dealing with, we, council, I felt that, and asked council's approval to move a public forum forward. Now, because these may take some time, I think with council's approval, I would give others who wish to speak to any item to do so at this point. The express purpose of this was to give people who wanted to speak to one of the items of the reports, but again, since this may take some time, I will allow anyone who wishes to speak to any matter to do so at this time. So if you would wish to do so, please state your name and address, and again, please remember our three-minute guideline.
Okay, yes, Randy O'Neil, 109 Sheffield Road, James City County. I wanted to say it was nice seeing council member Pons at the auction the other week. I'm glad Williamsburg bought that hotel. That 6.4 acres will be a good asset. I hope you rent it to students so that they'll have parking and a safe place to live. But I'd like to follow up on my business, which isn't doing so well here in James City County, even though there is millions and millions of dollars being spent on no more important issue than children's health. And I'm going to hand these up to you, Doug, so that you can get a look at what I do, which you didn't know. Mr. Friling knows very well what I do. And what I do, people, is I travel around the state in custom mobile fitness facilities, and I train children. For instance, tomorrow, I will be at Stone Robinson Elementary School in Albemarle County. I will train 406 children plus staff. 700 bucks, okay? If I did that three days in a row, all right, three days in a row, that's 1,200 students for $2,100. Give you a comparison, the James City County School Division, Williamsburg James City County School Division, is going to spend over $700,000 on programming this year that will serve, they say the same amount of people, but sadly, those are the amount of slots they have, it's not the attendance, okay? So I'm really concerned about how we have a cabal, it seems, that are spread amongst the local governments and not-for-profits that seem to be excluding those of us who have been recognized by the CDC as a, personally, I'm the only practitioner in here. This is the International Congress on Public Health and Physical Activity. These were the best programs in the world in 2006. Thankfully, I'm the only one from Virginia in there. I'm the only for-profit and small business. And I'm challenged every day when I see how little we're doing to promote health and wellness here in Williamsburg and James City County. We get a big fat goose egg. Remember, Williamsburg is 58th in the state in health and wellness, 58th, you're second in abortions. There needs to be some outreach. Needs to start in the schools. It needs to be effective, and it needs to reach everybody. And by the way, it needs to be demonstrated that it can be done at a low cost, and that you can improve the service, which is what I do. And I'm complaining to you because I have never received an RFP or an invitation to bid from the James City County School Division, the Williamsburg Park and Rec Department, or the James City County Park and Rec Department. All the programs that you run are far more expensive for far fewer people and have no data demonstrating that they work. So I, you know, it's wonderful, you have these public hearings on this gateway, you know, you're really concerned about landscaping, but we're not really concerned about health, especially with the children. You build million-dollar fields that sit idle the majority of the day and the majority of the year. The only good it is is for a public employee to maintain and look after. So I'm starting to get fed up. I've got an 80, I've got an 80-foot-long rig, 50-foot by 12-foot, and I'm going to print on the side of it my experience with WJCC schools, and I'm going to bring it to the people and see what they think about this very expensive collaboration between the cabals here. And I mean, it's a lot of money. There's a section there for William &amp; Mary, $40,500. They don't even say what they're going to do. It's just a block, 40, sounds like Phil Hamilton's kind of work. It challenges me. So once again, I would strongly suggest you pay a little more attention to the funds that we're spending on reaching our children, and you get people like myself who have been recognized by the CDC. The school's been saying that they're the number-six program, and the CDC ranks them as that. There is no such list, it's a lie, they've been telling it for years, and I'm fed up with it, especially when I've worked as hard as I have to get that kind of recognition. I've been on the National Mall three times. I'm a presidential fitness partner, and no one can go from a public housing complex and challenge the crack general on the corner to improve the health and wellness of those children, and then write into school and be germane to everything going on. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If anyone else wishes to address counsel, and I believe there are some parents from Berkeley School here, so please come forward, and if you would state your name and address, and thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Laura Tripp. I live at 313 East Tasewell's Way in Williamsburg, but I'm here representing the, as the president of the Berkeley PTA, Berkeley Middle School at 1118 Ironbound Road in Williamsburg, Virginia. The purpose of this resolution is to request a school resource officer for Berkeley Middle School. Whereas the Williamsburg James City County Public Schools are part of a joint schools' division, and whereas there are six secondary schools in the system, three high schools and three middle schools, and whereas five of these secondary schools are located in James City County, and one is located in the city of Williamsburg, and whereas the five secondary schools located in James City County have full-time dedicated school resource officers, and whereas these five full-time school resource officers are funded jointly by James City County and the James City County Police Department, and whereas the Williamsburg James City County Schools have recognized the detrimental effects of such actions as bullying and substance abuse on student achievement, and have supported efforts to educate students and parents on these problems by hosting the program Ryan's Story and a forum with the director of a local substance abuse program and a local family physician. And whereas we believe a dedicated school resource officer would be a valuable resource in helping administrators resolve problems with behavior, the use of alcohol and drugs, and school truancy, the Berkeley Middle School PTA hereby resolves that in a joint school division, not all funding and support mechanisms can be funded by a formula in every instance, and that in the spirit of a joint schools' division, if school location is the determining factor for deciding who provides funding for a police presence in the school, then the city should see it as their role, responsibility, role and responsibility to do so. That the Berkeley Middle School PTA requests that a full-time dedicated school resource officer be provided immediately to rectify the inequity that has arisen in the school system at this point, and to deal with any problems that have been going on, and we see potential for going on as we go along. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and as you know, city council is aware of this, and we've had communications, and we have ongoing discussions about this, but we, I think council and city staff wants to work with you to see a resolution to this.
That would be wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council.
Thank you for your time. If anybody else wish to address counsel on any matter, we'll also have an open forum at the end of the meeting as well. With that, we go to our next agenda item with his reports. Jody, the monthly financial statements, anything in particular?
Nothing to highlight this month.
Any questions on financial reports? Monthly department operating reports, anything?
Nothing to highlight, but certainly willing to answer any questions that council may have.
Any questions on operating reports?
I have just one point and one question. Once again, healthcare costs for the city staff have gone way up, and I think we just need to keep tracking it. I mean, healthcare is part of the problem in the entire country, and it's starting to hit the city again. And I also had a question from Mr. Nestor on the planning depart report. You mentioned Wyndham West has changed some of its buildings from, they were townhouses or condominiums, and they're not now, is that?
The Wyndham, the existing Wyndham East and the Wyndham West project were originally approved as townhouse-style condominium units. Wyndham West was approved for 24 units. There are 12 units there now. All the roads and basic infrastructure is in place. What is proposed is instead of having that as a condominium project, they are going to convert that to townhouses on individual lots. So instead of just having a condominium unit, you would also own an individual lot. The individual lot that your unit sits on, it will be essentially the same layout. The 12 units that are there now will merely have lots drawn around the units. They had to make some small modifications to meet the townhouse lot requirements, but once it's done, it will essentially look like the original proposal for the 22, 24 condominiums.
But what will be the relationship? I mean, the people in the condominiums presumably have a condominium group. I mean, that condominium takes care of the outsides and that sort of thing. I mean, is there some kind of homeowner relationship between these?
Well, first, Wyndham East and Wyndham West are two separate ownerships.
Right, they're across the road from each other.
Now, Wyndham West, now the condominium units are all rental units at this point.
Okay.
So it will just be converted from condominiums to individual townhouses for sale.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. And any other questions on operating reports? If not, we'll move to city manager reports, and we have four today. The first is the purchase of property at 901 Capital Landing Road. Jody?
On Wednesday, October 5th, the city was the successful bidder at a foreclosure public auction sale of the Lord Pageant Motor Court property located at 109 Capital Landing Road. Before you is a slide of the property, just to give you an orientation to, this is Capital Landing Road, there's Parkway Drive, and sort of around it's Forest Hill Road, just to kind of give council a sense of the property. The purchase amount was $634,000 plus a 10% premium for transaction costs for a total of $697,400. The city manager authorized participation in the auction after consultation with the economic development director and city attorney, and after consultation with the mayor, who individually advised the remaining council members of the potential purchase. The property is sizable and strategically located in the center of the important Capital Landing Road corridor. Its future will influence the future success of this corridor. It also adjoins single-family residences. These factors taken together and given the opportunity to afford a public auction sale compel public sector intervention. The primary purpose for the city buying Lord Pageant site is to allow time for the best possible outcome on this important parcel. The city's goal should be to return this property to the private sector for commercial reuse or redevelopment at the most advantageous time. The next steps for the Lord Pageant site include either actively marketing it or land banking it for the future. Options include adaptive reuse of one or more of the existing buildings or demolition of all structures to prepare the site for the highest and best use and to benefit the entire corridor. In the interim, the city will keep the property secure and the landscape tended. The Northeast Triangle Task Force may also wish to review these options and give advice during their work in this particular area of the city. Future use of the property, it needs to be consistent with a comprehensive plan and current zoning, and this should be stated as part of the city's objective. Consideration of any change in this land use, if any, should be part of the comprehensive plan update process, which we'll be doing shortly. To fund the purchase, the finance director recommends carrying over sufficient funds from the fiscal year 2011 capital improvement program, specifically savings from the project account from municipal building expansion and the capital contingency fund. It's the recommendation that council ratify the purchase of this property at 109 Capital Landing Road as specified in the memorandum of sales agreement in the amount of $697,400, and that for the fiscal year 2011 budgeted but unexpended capital improvement funds and municipal building expansion and capital contingency count be transferred to cover the cost of the purchase, and that city council state its intent to return the property to the private sector for commercial redevelopment and/or adaptive reuse in conformance with the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance of the city.
Thank you. Thank you, Jody. Does anybody have any questions of Jody at this point?
I do.
Yeah?
Ms. Miller, you may need to look to others for the answer. The size of the property, the six-plus acres, that includes the retention pond?
My understanding is that's correct.
Is that, and this might be from Mr. Nestor, is that portion of the parcel developable beyond, I mean, even the little segment that already has construction on it? If that were taken out, could that be rebuilt upon?
This would be the section right here?
Correct.
Yeah, on the site, there are two zoning designations on the property, and the pond and that one building in the back is a single-family residential zoning, and the front is commercial zoning. So it, there's much more limited potential for the back of the property just because of your setbacks around Forest Hill Drive, and then you have that stormwater retention pond. So I think the bulk of the opportunities for development are where the bulk of the motel sits now.
So would the commercial portion of the site be approximately three acres or somewhere around there?
Say three, four, three, three and a half acres.
Okay. Thank you.
Scott, do you have any questions?
Just to follow up on Vice Mayor Friling's question, all of the six acres, though, would factor in the determination of, for example, if somebody wanted to do some housing there, you would use the acreage of the whole property towards the density rating, the number of units?
All right.
Even though only three of it, three acres are buildable.
Well, right now, if in the, the front is zone B2, on the B2 property, you can have multifamily if it's condominiums, and you have maximum of two-thirds of your floor area in multifamily, but you could only apply the B2 zone property toward that density. You couldn't, you couldn't apply the single-family residential to that density.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I must have missed that when you said that. The back, the rear part is, is single-family?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And at what density?
In the B2 districts is 14 dwelling units per net acre.
And Judy, any questions? If not, I'll come to council for action.
Mr. Mayor, I move that city council ratify the purchase of property at 901 Capital Landing Road as specified in the memorandum of sales agreement of October 5th, 2011, in the amount of $697,400, and that fiscal year 11 budgeted but unexpended capital improvement program funds and the municipal building expansion and capital contingency accounts be transferred to cover the cost of the purchase, and that city council state its intent to return the property to the private sector for the commercial development and/or adaptive reuse in conformance with the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance of the city of Williamsburg.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Newtonson?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Friling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Thank you all, and thanks staff for all the work that went into this. This was very good and under a time constraint, so thank you. The next city manager report is Village of Woodshire Apartments in the rental inspection program.
And I'm going to turn this over to Planning Director Reed Nestor.
As you recall, we looked in March of this year of adding this to our rental inspection program, adding the Village of Woodshire as an individual property subject to our inspection procedure. Representative of the management company requested that there be a six-month delay so they could work to improve the situation, and there has been some reduction in the number of complaints. When we talked about this last in 2010, there were 70 complaints. So far this year, we have 15 complaints received. However, last month, the management company for this project changed. It was Great Atlantic, now it's Harbor Group Management Company. So from the staff's standpoint, we are proposing that we delay a decision until April so we can fully evaluate the progress that is being done with the new management company.
Thank you, Reed. Any questions from Mr. Nestor?
I have a question. Mr. Nestor, clearly, Great Atlantic was aware of the city's concern. They came and representatives spoke to council, requesting that they not be included in the rental inspection district at that time, and promising to take steps to alleviate some of the issues that were plaguing that community. Has there been any conversation with Harbor, either initially by Great Atlantic or from the city?
I talked to the woman that had been in charge of this for Great Atlantic. She is also, will also be in charge of this for the new company.
That's helpful.
Because she'll continue to work for them, and I explained the situation to her, and she's been keeping us updated with what they have been doing on the site. And I explained what we were doing here, and she did not have a problem of six months delay for the process.
Okay, thank you.
Scott, any questions? Doug? Judy? If not, I'll come back to council for action.
Mr. Mayor, I move that city council defer action on a proposed ordinance to include the Village of Woodshire in the rental inspection program until April 12th, 2012.
Second. I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please? Ms. Scott?
Ms. Newtonson?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Friling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Next order of business is replacement fire apartment aerial platform, award of purchase contract.
I'd ask that Fire Chief Pat Dent make the presentation.
Chief, welcome.
Thank you.
Didn't we just buy you a new truck?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor Holman and members of city council. The city's vehicle replacement plan calls for the purchase of a new aerial platform to replace the existing truck ten. And just a point of clarification, sometimes the common terminology is a ladder truck, The current truck tent is a 1994 Sutford aerial platform. The proposed new apparatus would be a 2012 Pierce Quantum mid-mount aerial platform. There were a lot of considerations that we looked at when we decided on purchasing this new apparatus. First of all, we looked at the age of the current apparatus. The National Fire Protection Association recommends that any frontline apparatus, 15 years of age or greater, at least be removed to, moved to a reserve status or taken out of the fleet. The second thing we looked at with this apparatus, there's been a lot of personnel safety improvements over the years. This apparatus would have front impact and side roll protection in the cab for firefighters. It also has a seatbelt monitoring system, and it also comes with a very technical electronic stability control system, which it has sensors on the apparatus that monitors when the apparatus may be get in a situation where a potential rollover or a sliding effect or a spinout, and it will govern the RPMs down on the engine and start applying braking to the, to the fire apparatus to keep that from happening. It's a very sophisticated system. Another thing we looked at is some of the obsolete components, such as the inadequate braking on larger apparatus, the improvements they've made over the years. And actually, there's been some surveys done, some research where, over the years, it's human nature for the drivers, when they find out that they don't have the acceleration speed that they, they once had in apparatus, that they tend not to slow down at intersections when they should, or they don't apply the brakes in a manner when they should when they approach intersections. So that's another reason we were looking at the purchase. Condition of some of the major components, obviously, the drivetrain with the transmission, the pump itself, and the engine, and then when you have apparatus at this age, you start to run into a problem with availability of parts, which creates a longer downtime if you do have problems with the apparatus. And obviously, changes in the, in the National Fire Protection Association standards since 1994. They've had six major changes in their recommendations since 1994. Our plan is that the truck ten would, our current truck ten would be removed from the fleet and sold at fair market value. We currently have a verbal commitment for a sale of $100,000 for that piece of apparatus. So that, that's, that's being worked out now. They're, they're obtaining the funding for that purchase. Another thing I looked at when we were determining this was, in this economy, some departments have, across the country, have looked at refurbishing current equipment instead of purchasing new equipment. My research determined that it would cost us about 50% of the cost of new apparatus to refurbish the existing ladder truck. The other thing with that is, it doesn't bring us into full compliance with NFPA because you can't change everything on the apparatus. So that, that's a consideration. And then another consideration with refurbishment is that it would be a considerable amount of downtime to have that ladder truck out of service, and since we only have one aerial platform, that would be significant for us. The other thing with refurbishment, as I said, 50% of the cost of a new piece of apparatus, if you look at that, that would be what, almost what we paid for the current truck ten in 1994. So it, it doesn't look like it would be a good investment to, to put that money into a piece of equipment in 1994. The other thing with this new apparatus, the cab and pump panel configuration are identical to the engine that we purchased last year, which reduces training time and increases our efficiency because of familiarity with equipment and the components and their operation. The new aerial platform is proposed to be purchased under a cooperative purchase contract through the City of Suffolk. We had an apparatus committee that looked at various apparatus. They determined that this was, this bid was competitive. They worked with the company to create some, some things that are, change some things on the apparatus that are specific to Williamsburg. And the specifications, with those specification changes, the contract price is $1,135,442. This price does reflect a $46,731 discount for a 90% prepayment at the time that we placed the order. We also did that with the engine that we, we purchased last year. Pierce Manufacturing and Emergency Atlantic Solutions will also provide training to all our personnel. Emergency Atlantic, Atlantic Emergency Solutions also provides a first full-service facility in Chester, Virginia. They also have a mobile shop that is able to come to the station if we get in, in a position that we need repairs done on-site. The funding for the aerial platform was budgeted in the city's vehicle replacement plan for FY 2012 at $1,200,000, so we were able to come in a little under budget for this piece of apparatus. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great. Thank you, Chief. Well, well done, as always. Thank you. Any questions?
Just a couple. Obviously, Mayor Holman was kidding when he said, "We bought you a new piece of apparatus," because these are, these are really for the people of this community, James City County and York County, because they're, they're the ones who benefit from having the proper equipment in place to allow the firefighters to do the work that they do safely, hopefully. Can you talk a little bit just about the training? I'm assuming that any cost of training is included in the purchase price?
Yes, sir. If, when we purchase the apparatus, we include the training as a part of the, the price, and they actually do some really, really in-depth training. They have specialists that come down and spend an entire, whatever time is necessary. It's not even limited to a day. They spend the time necessary until they're comfortable that our people are comfortable operating the apparatus. And they come on all three shifts until they're comfortable that, that training is complete.
And are all firemen capable of driving this piece of equipment?
No, sir. Well, right now, we don't, we, we actually have people that are trained to drive the engine and to drive the aerial, and then we'll go, until they're released by their company officers and their battalion chief, that they're comfortable, they go through training on their own. So not everybody we have in the department at this time is capable or been trained to drive that apparatus. Eventually, they will be, but not at this time. When something like this comes in, we, we take some of our more experienced drivers until we, to get some of the newer drivers up to speed on driving this apparatus. Obviously, this is a long, it's a long piece of apparatus, and it, and it takes some pretty knowledgeable folks who have been driving for quite a while to maneuver that piece of equipment.
And the, you talked about a potential buyer for the existing?
Yes, sir.
Engine. I assume that's another fire department and not somebody you just would like to have one?
No, yes, sir, it's another fire department. The only thing they, because they had not secured the funding, they, they asked me not to make that public yet. One thing I can say is that it will still be in the region and, and be available to us if, if everything works out on this sale.
And is that just a circumstance where, and I'm not trying to get at who is the potential buyer, I'm just really trying to understand the process. Is that another department that is either looking for a reserve aerial platform or a department that otherwise couldn't afford new equipment, so our used piece is the best that they could hope for?
That's exactly, yes, sir, that's exactly what it is. They, they had already been denied to purchase a new piece of apparatus. They don't currently have a ladder truck, so this is the best that they could do. They're very excited about it, so hopefully, everything works out on their end. But that, that's, and, you know, sometimes the question comes up, well, why is a piece of apparatus that we're taking out of our fleet, someone else is purchasing, when not everybody can afford to meet the recommendations from the National Fire Protection Association? We, we don't meet all of their recommendations, not, I don't think there's a department in the country that meets all of their recommendations. We do the best we can with, with the funding available to meet NFPA recommendations. So there's a lot of departments across the country, even with breathing apparatus, their apparatus, all types of equipment that they don't meet NFPA, they're not NFPA compliant because they just can't afford it.
And with last year's purchase and this purchase, what's the overall condition of the fleet, then?
Where, actually, one of the things, I talked with Mr. Tuttle early on, we, we were looking at the possibility, could we move this ladder truck back, because we did just purchase the engine last year? Again, all those factors that I mentioned earlier that we took into consideration. But another thing is, is because our vehicle replacement plan, we have a medic unit on, on schedule next year. And I'm sure y'all are very familiar with our medic units and the amount of mileage that they have on it. We have a medic unit that's, that's approaching 90,000 miles that's going to have to be replaced next year. So, but, once we get that medic unit, the fleets, we're going to be pretty stable for some time. Then it's just going to be some smaller utility vehicles for the next couple of years. But it's not any big, even though a medic unit is a big purchase now, you know, they're up close to $300,000 for a medic unit.
Thank you.
Scott, any questions?
No questions. Maybe a question about, and maybe Jody would be better to answer it. Where, where does the money come from? And let me add to that, I mean, this is something that's been in our CIP for some time.
Correct. And, and this goes through, we go through a replacement program, so whether it's fire or any other vehicles, we have a, a very systematic approach to looking at sort of the useful life of vehicles and preparing for purchases such as one like a ladder truck.
And so, to that point, you know, we've been, this has been on our radar for some times, and it's not something that's just crept up on us. Thank you, I just want to make that point.
And actually, we go back and review this every year and, and adjust, because obviously, we, we try to make our best prediction on five years from now what a piece of apparatus is going to cost, and we, but we, we, staff continually looks at that every year and, and adjusts those figures as it moves along.
I just wanted to add, Mr. Friling mentioned that this, this truck is for the citizens, it's for York County, it's for James City County, it's also for the college. We, we respond to fires at the college. So it really is something the city provides. And, and this, this is the only aerial truck we have, I mean?
Yes, sir.
And, and?
And, and as Mr. Friling mentioned earlier, it is a bit, an important tool for our mutual aid relationship, because we have three aerials in the area, one in James City, one in York. We have one in Toanna also, but I count in this immediate area, so that gives us three aerial devices and to service the three localities.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you, Chief Dent, that's a terrific presentation, as always. I'll come back to council for action.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that city council authorize the city manager to enter into a purchase agreement with Atlantic Emergency Solutions for the purchase of a new replacement aerial platform in the amount of $1,135,442.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Knutson?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Friling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Our final city manager report is the Peninsula Hazard Mitigation Plan, Proposed Resolution 11-15. Jody?
And I'll ask Chief Dent to come up and make this presentation.
Very good at delegating. Oh, my Lord, there it is.
Mayor Holman and members of city council, fortunately, I won't be asking for, for any money with this. The Federal Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000 required localities to adopt a hazard mitigation plan to be eligible for pre- and post-disaster mitigation funding from FEMA. In order to comply, the City of Williamsburg, James City County, York County, the cities of Hampton and Newport News, put their efforts together in 2006 and developed the initial hazard mitigation plan. Another thing with that, the original plan was adopted in 2006 by city council. Another thing with the Disaster Mitigation Act, that it requires the plan be updated every five years. Starting in September of 2010, the existing jurisdictions formed a committee and were able to obtain some grant funding and retained a consultant to assist us with updating the hazard mitigation plan for the peninsula. The consultant worked with staff from the City of Williamsburg and the other localities, and in our case, we also had representatives from Colonial Williamsburg and the College of William &amp; Mary that participated in this process. The updated Peninsula Hazard Mitigation Plan has been reformatted and reorganized to meet FEMA guidelines. The plan includes hazard identification and risk analysis for the region, but also identifies certain specific things for each locality. The update also includes a series of hazard mitigation goals and objectives, and they're prioritized by each locality. So as such, this plan becomes not only a hazard mitigation plan for the region, but it also is a hazard mitigation plan for the City of Williamsburg and, and for each of the other individual localities that participated. The federal regulations also required that we provided, had a process to provide, allow the public to provide input. That was done, access to the draft plan was made available through a link to the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission on their mitigation website. Citizens could go there, and there was a link that took them to a survey, and they could provide input into the plan. Additionally, each of the jurisdictions reached out to their communities. We offered it, we had it publicized in the local media. It was on Facebook, Twitter, 411. We posted it on the website for citizens to comment. The updated plan has been reviewed by Virginia Department of Emergency Management, and it indicates that we've met all the applicable requirements, and it's currently under final review by FEMA. I'm sure as y'all could see from the time it took to download on your iPads, but just so you understand me, this is a, a very, very in-depth document. And again, the process started in September 2010. We had numerous meetings, conference calls, and workshops to gather all the information from the various localities. The other thing I'd like to say today is we have Larry Zenzinger and Deb Mills from Dew Barry, who was the consultant that worked with us on this project, and I'd just like to publicly acknowledge them for all of their hard work and, and their efforts in guiding us through this process. So that's all I have. If anybody has any questions, hopefully, between the three of us, we'd be able to answer any questions you might have.
Thank, thank you very much, Chief, and, and thank you all for being here and for your help in this, too. Thank you. Mr. Friling?
Sure. Chief, could you just talk a little bit about how the plan is used? Well, certainly, if we have a circumstance like a hurricane, there's usually some lead time, you know, we're aware if something's coming, time to prepare. But in the event of such events that we previously might have thought wouldn't happen in this area, like an earthquake or a tornado, which are specifically cited in here, you can't wait until the event is happening and say, "Oh, let's go check out what the handbook says." I mean, how do you keep everybody prepared for every eventuality for something as complicated as this?
It, it just takes constant review of the plan, and, and as I was talking with my staff earlier, obviously, there's no way that, I know everything that's in this plan. It's a reference document, but we do, obviously, there's a lot of information in here about the other localities. We have some common hazards that affect all of us, then sometimes the unique ones pop up, but it's something that we just need to constantly review. And in this plan, there's some, there's some processes in place, not just to let it sit on the shelf for the next five years, but that we constantly review and update the plan as we go through the next five years until we have another scheduled update.
Thank you.
Scott? Once again, the iPads have saved us a whole lot of money. When I looked at 400 pages. And, and again, back, back to your point, Chief, this really is a cooperative effort by all the jurisdictions on the peninsula to, to come together and have a unified sort of process and, and mechanism for dealing with a, a wide range of potential hazard. And I think that's from, from a community standpoint, to know that, you know, we're not alone, and that, that, you know, we have partners that, that we can rely on in this is critically important. So thank, thank you, and thank everyone involved in this. With that, I'll come back to council for action.
See, one more thing, it's almost essential, if we have mutual aid agreements, to know that we're all going to apply that aid the same way. But, Mr. Mayor, I move that city council adopt Proposed Resolution 11-15 endorsing the 2011 Peninsula Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Knutson?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Friling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Thank you very much, and thank you again, Chief Dent. Next item on the agenda is city attorney reports. We have four. The first of these is possession and transport of firearms, Proposed Ordinance 11-18. Ms. Shelton?
Mayor and city council, Section 13124 of the city code, which applies only to city recreational facilities, so that would be parks, water path recreation center, ballfields, currently provides that no person other than authorized personnel shall carry or discharge any dangerous or deadly weapons or firearms of any description. The Code of Virginia has been amended. Section 15.2-915 removes locality's ability to regulate possession, transport, sale, carrying, storage, and ownership of firearms. There is no specific code provision that accepts public parks from that general provision, although there are specific provisions of the code that gives the city the right to regulate firearms in different ways. So parks falls under this particular provision, and thus, that provision of, needs to be amended. Weapons, dangerous and deadly weapons, are more things than just firearms. So there are knives and nunchucks and throwing stars and things like that. The city can still prohibit those. So we have prepared an ordinance that's in front of council today. those. So we have prepared an ordinance that's in front of council today. In preparing the ordinance, we looked at what the state code permits. So anywhere in the city that anyone travels, if a gun is illegal, it's illegal, and that will include city recreational facilities. If someone is not legally permitted to carry a firearm, that is not legally permitted, and that includes public recreational facilities. I understand, and have had some discussion with gentleman who spoke here earlier regarding his concern that this provision would only apply to legal firearms. And it does, because by operation of state law, illegal firearms are not permitted anywhere in the city of Williamsburg. We did add an amendment to what was originally proposed to council specifying that there are no penalties associated, city code penalties, associated with carrying an illegal firearm on recreational facility property. So if someone did carry an illegal firearm on recreational facility property, the only penalty would be those in the state code, and it would be the same as if they were arrested on a sidewalk for carrying an illegal weapon. Having said that, if council feels uncomfortable continuing to include the language legally in the possession of the individual carrying said firearm, which is in compliance with the Code of Virginia and Code of the city of Williamsburg, council certainly has the ability to remove that in considering the ordinance, in which case, the ordinance would read, "No person other than authorized personnel shall carry any dangerous or deadly weapons of any description in any public recreational facility, except a firearm legally, firearm which may be carried but may not be discharged in any public recreational facility." The city still has the ability to regulate the discharge of firearms. There is a specific code provision in state code that permits the city to regulate discharge. Happy to answer any questions that city council may have.
Thank you, Ms. Shelton. Anybody have questions?
We're not the only locality that's dealing with this, are we?
I'm sure that we are not. I have not checked what other jurisdictions have done.
What is the downside of going to the latter option that you just referenced?
It's legally sufficient.
What does that really mean?
If someone's looking at the city code, and it says, "No person can have a dangerous or deadly weapon except a firearm," period, then I'm not sure what message that sends to the person who's looking at the city code. If a layman is looking at the city code, does that send the message that all firearms, whether or not they are legal or illegal, are permitted in city recreational facilities? As a legal matter, the police department can charge someone with a state code violation for carrying an illegal gun. So is it clear? I think it's more clear if you say legal, but I think it's quibbling, because essentially, we're not authorizing, we are not authorizing illegal weapons in recreational facilities. Could someone read it that way? They could.
Well, and then to counter that, though, if we say, "Except a firearm legally in the possession of the individual," how are we restricting an individual's right to carry a firearm?
I don't believe we are. If it's legal and they can carry it, you can carry it in a recreational facility. If it's illegal and you can't carry it, you can't carry it in a recreational facility. As a practical matter, it's just coming at the same problem from two different perspectives.
And you have a legal concern with either approach?
I don't.
Okay.
So this comes down to a question of message, or practicality of who's going, who would possibly be reading this? Not necessarily that one would haul up in court and the other one would not?
Anyone can access it. So if some, I don't think anyone's going to go look at the city code to see if they can carry an illegal weapon in a recreational facility. So this is just how I chose to draft it, and city council has the option, and the gentleman who spoke earlier today would like city council to remove that provision. It is legally okay for city council to remove that provision. It's going to be enforced exactly the same way.
Any questions?
Can't wrap my brain around it quite yet. And when you talk about illegally, a concealed weapon?
A weapon that's concealed by someone who does not have a concealed weapons permit. There are some exceptions to this, but a fully automated weapon, a weapon where the serial numbers have been filed off, those are illegal weapons, or someone carrying it illegally. Someone who has a protective order that specifies that they're not entitled to carry a firearm, they might own a firearm, but they're not entitled to carry a firearm. So their carrying of that firearm violates a provision in 18.2 of the city code, or of the state code. So there are felony provisions, and then there's the city misdemeanor. This removes firearms entirely from misdemeanors, but it still provides that if someone's carrying an illegal weapon in a recreational facility, it's still an illegal weapon, and the state code provisions will apply.
We're doing this because the state changed.
We are doing this because the state no longer gives us the discretion under our general police powers to regulate firearms as provided so, carrying, possession, transport.
The state did that deliberately.
Yes, they did.
It seems to me that we want ordinances to be as simple as possible, but also not subject to misinterpretation. And I guess my question for you is, which wording do you recommend, given those two factors that we're trying to balance? Keeping it as simple and straightforward as possible, but also not subjecting it to potential misinterpretation?
Well, obviously, I've written it the way that I've written it, so my recommendation is for council to pass the ordinance as written. Council has heard the concerns that were addressed here earlier. Council has the option of amending what I have proposed to council to address those concerns.
And that, and you've also added the language, "The carrying or possession of firearms within a public recreational facility, which are not lawfully carried or possessed, shall be subject only to those enforcement provisions and penalties prescribed in the Code of Virginia."
That's right.
So that helps to clarify?
It clarifies there is no misdemeanor penalty for firearms in recreational facilities, either legal or illegal.
And your proposal doesn't make it more restrictive?
It is not any more restrictive. It just, the question is, is the city recognizing that illegal weapons are illegal everywhere pursuant to the state code? Is the city recognizing in its ordinance that someone who's not legally entitled to carry a weapon is not legally entitled to carry a weapon regardless of where they are in the city? Does that equal governing? Are we passing an ordinance governing if we recognize what the state code provides? And I don't believe that we are.
I'll just share my opinion. I like Ms. Shelton's language, because to me, it's more explicit to the less legal-oriented person. And if it is subject to legal challenge, this wording, then the penalty is, we change the ordinance?
The result would be, we change the ordinance to remove that language. If someone has standing to bring a case, we could potentially pay for their attorney's fees. So, I mean, there is a dollar amount associated with it if someone wants to challenge not being able to carry illegal weapons into recreational facility in city ordinance.
Any other questions from Ms. Shelton? I'll come to council for action.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I'm, you know, I'm comfortable taking the advice of the city attorney. You know, I think if, you know, she hasn't, in her recommendation, hasn't superseded the state's ruling in law, so I'm comfortable with leaving it as it's been proposed.
And with all respect to Mr. Page and the audience, the city attorney is our legal advisor, and one individual in whom we should be placing trust for matters that require legal opinion. So I'm comfortable with it as well.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the approval of proposed ordinance 11-18, as written by Ms. Shelton.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Newtonson?
Aye.
Mr. Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Friling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Thank you. Next order of business is dog tag issuances.
The finance department asked us to take a look at the city code to see if they could issue dog tags for multiple years. That's currently being done in the jurisdictions around Williamsburg. The city code currently provides that dog tags may be issued for one year. So the proposal in front of city council is that dog tags can be issued for up to three years, depending on how long the vaccination is good for. This is simply just a housekeeping measure to allow them to do that and be compliant with the city code.
And I would just add to that, from a staff standpoint, it's easier to manage. So you're dealing with, you know, citizens one time for three years and able to license that dog for a three-year time period. So it's more efficient that way.
Any questions? My dogs will be happy soon.
Mr. Mayor, I'm with the city council adopt proposed ordinance 11-19.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Newtonson?
Aye.
Mr. Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Friling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Did I need to disclose that I had a dog?
No, I don't think so.
I had rabies shots.
Only if they didn't have it. Next order of business is Board of Equalization Permanent and Alternate Appointments. This is proposed ordinance 11-20.
This is an option for city council to consider. Currently, the members of the Board of Equalization are all appointed each and every year by the circuit court after recommendation for the appointees from city council. The state code provides that jurisdictions may, if they desire, create a permanent Board of Equalization, which would function like every other board and commission that the city has, with staggered terms, certain people being appointed in different years, so that there is not 100% turnover on the Board of Equalization every single year. In terms of process, city council would still need to do their reappointments each time someone's term expired, and that would still need to be, the person would still be actually appointed by the circuit court, but that recommendation would be made by city council, would just be through staggered terms. So in terms of staff work, it would be essentially the same thing that we're doing now, but it does provide a permanent board as opposed to turnover 100% of, 100% of the board every single year.
Any questions from Ms. Shelton?
Does it have any advantage to turning, to going through this reappointment process every year?
It's just an option, a housekeeping option to bring before council. I don't know that there's an advantage or disadvantage to doing it one way or the other, except that you've got to find five people every year who want to serve on the Board of Equalization. And if you had a board that was a permanent board with staggered terms, you would be looking for one person.
Is there a length of time specified for the term, or is that something council would?
It's a four-year term ultimately, but it is staggered terms to begin with, so one person will be one term, two people two.
But once it's up and running, it would be four-year terms, but staggered four-year terms?
I believe so.
That's just like planning commission and other boards and committees. I mean, what this does is bring this into line with the way we deal with other boards and commissions.
Yes, it does.
Well, is it three-year terms?
Three-year terms.
And is there any limit, if we establish a permanent board with three-year terms, is there any limit to the number of terms an individual can serve?
I don't believe that we have specified that in the ordinance.
And the state doesn't specify that either. I don't recollect anything on Board of Equalization either.
I don't recollect that there is either. I'm quickly glancing at the state code section, and I don't see anything.
Any other questions? I'll come to council for action.
I think this makes sense, because it just, it helps the members of the board understand what their obligation or term responsibility will be. It helps to have a more consistent board, and it would seem to take some effort out of the process streamlining it. So I think it makes sense. So unless somebody thinks otherwise, I'll move that city council adopt proposed ordinance 11-20.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Newtonson?
Aye.
Mr. Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Friling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
And our final city attorney report is Real Property Tax Deferral for Elderly and Disabled, proposed ordinance 11-21. Ms. Shelton?
In its 2011 session, the General Assembly decided to allow localities to set their own income limits and financial worth limits for purposes of any ordinance that either defer or exempts real property taxes for the elderly and disabled. The ordinance that is in front of you does just that. It confirms the limitations that we have currently in the city code, which were the state limitations up through June 30, 2011. It also updates the definition of gross income to include anyone who resides in the property. Their income will be considered for purposes of that calculation unless they are a paid caregiver who resides with a bona fide paid caregiver, so not a family member that you pay $50 to, but someone who's actually hired to come in and live with you and care for you, or a bona fide tenant. Their income will not count. Everyone else's income who resides in the house will count for purposes of making that determination. City council can set these limits wherever city council would like to set these limits, but we need to set limits in our ordinance, at least in the short term. And if council would like to look at those, council can give that instruction. But at least in the short term, there needs to be some income limits specified in our ordinance, and the state code limits from 2011 are in there. And Mr. Sarah can give you more information. I can give you the actual numbers. The income limit for a one-person household for fiscal year 2012 is $50,000, and that goes up to an eight-person household at $87,650. And then the net financial worth limitations are $232,688.
Thank you. Any questions?
And just to clarify that, net financial worth excludes the value of the dwelling itself.
And just for clarification, when you, this is a deferral, this is not an exemption?
This is a deferral, not an exemption.
Right. And so at some, at some point, when the property, when that person no longer resides, that tax, the deferral becomes due, I guess, when there's a sale of the property?
That's right.
And so the city's not giving away tax dollars, right?
We're just making it a little easier for the elderly to live.
Right.
We have a measure on how often this is used.
Mr. Sarah?
Mr. Sarah, I mean, this really doesn't change what we've been doing. It's just that the state has specified that we have to specify the limits rather than them specifying it. So basically, there's no change in what's existed.
That's correct.
Except now it's our ordinance rather than the state.
And how many, how many do we have in the program?
We had, last year, we had 11. We have one signed up so far this year. The cutoff or the deadline for signing up for this year's for FY12 is December 1. So we need, we need some direction, so we start making sure that.
And do we reach out to those folks who were in the process last year?
Absolutely. We changed our whole process this year to be more proactive with getting them to sign up, if there are signed up.
And any other questions for Mr. Sarah? Thank you, Phil. Any further questions or discussion?
I think it makes, well, we have to put a limit in. I move that city council adopt proposed ordinance 11-21.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Newtonson?
Aye.
Mr. Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Friling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Shelton, for lots of housekeeping here. This, this goes on all year long, doesn't it, after General Assembly sessions?
A lot of work being done.
Yes, right. Next order of business is unfinished business. I don't believe we have any.
Just a point for discussion, if I may, and maybe it's new business, but it's about the legislative agenda. I was approached by some hoteliers not associated with any organization collectively, but they were reminding me that the original WADMAC legislation had a sunset clause, and they had asked that I put it on the table here for discussion to reinstitute the sunset clause to WADMAC at some future date. So I threw that out for consideration.
Thanks. Any other new business for council? Okay, and Jody, do you, is that sufficient information for you at this point? Yeah, you'll come back at our next work session with that legislative agenda.
Yes, at November, you'll have a more formal draft to review, which will have all the items we talked about on Monday, and any additional new items that we've become aware of between now and November.
And also, I'll remind you that the Williamsburg Area Destination Marketing Committee is having a retreat in a week or so, and addressing a whole number of issues. And out of that retreat, I expect some legislative agendas to come to the city for our consideration. So that, I think there may be several items that are part of that. Any other new business? If not, that brings us to our final item, agenda item for open, for open meeting, and that's open forum. Anybody who wishes to address City Council on any issue, if you do, please come forward, state your name, and we'll listen. Thank you so.
Yes, I forgot to state my name last time. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and members of council. My name is Daniel Page, and I live at 4006 Summit Loop over by Monticello Road. And Ms. Shelton and I agree on quite a bit, and the City Council actually did quite a very good thing today in changing the previous code section. If I may approach, Ms. Shelton? I think that under proposed language A and B, we address your concern on accidentally telling the layman that he can carry unlawful weapons. If we change the ordinance to what it was, to a person other than authorized personnel shall carry, or no person other than authorized personnel shall carry any dangerous or deadly weapons of any description in any public recreation except a firearm, and then at the end of that, put state and federal firearms law shall still apply, it'll do exactly what was done, except the city won't be purporting to enforce state law. They won't be purporting to enforce state law under their ordinance, and the state troopers can still, or the city police or any police officers can still perform their jobs just as they were before. So hopefully, if I can talk to a few of you after the meeting, and we can see if we can perhaps bring this up again at a future date.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to address City Council?
My name's Dennis Kaiser. I live on Motoka Court, and I was sent here by my dog. He can read a paper, and he said that I needed to come and make sure we extended that. But the reason I'm here is that, you know, we're obviously disappointed in the vote on the rumor rule over there on Motoka Court. To go back to what you said earlier, that the ordinance should be simple and not misinterpreted in the way the ordinance is today, that it favors investors to buy houses and use the four-person rule, as opposed to homeowners to take on rumors. And I think that's wrong. And so I've said that. I was hoping that something would go through about the rumor rule. It didn't. As y'all are probably aware, we have rumors in our house. There's lots of people on Motoka Court that have rumors. We have workers that work at Colonial Williamsburg. We have workers that work at Bush Gardens, utility workers. We've formerly had school teachers, local church ministers live there. So it's not only students, and yes, we have students. But as I told the Planning Commission, at what point has any house that has had rumors had complaints in reference to noise, trash, excessive parking cars, things of that nature? And the answer, it just doesn't happen. So this whole thing that the folks at Indian Springs got up, and they did a very good job of rallying the troops, but all their comments, as far as I was concerned, was off-base, and we were looking at a way to provide safe, affordable, clean housing for people that need it. And so now we're stuck with the same rule that we had before that. And yes, I'm one of the few people that has gone before the Board of Zoning Appeals. And I'm telling you, it's not a fun experience, and I think it's, once again, it's very skewed toward the investor versus the homeowner. So in your address last year, you talked about six neighborhoods that the occupancy percentage was less than 50%, and you wanted to do something to address those six neighborhoods. We firmly believe that was one thing that we could use to actually increase home ownership percentage on our street, and provide housing for people, whether it be students or workers in the community. And so the one proposal that's come before this council that would address an incentive to those six neighborhoods, the one issue that came before council, you voted it down. So we, as a neighborhood, are putting together some other things that we can do to encourage home ownership. So we'll be back in front of y'all, asking for various things. But I still don't want the rumor issue to die, because I don't want to have to go back before the Board of Zoning Appeals three years from now for that. But I still think that it's an incentive for homeowners to buy houses, live in the city. From a mortgage perspective, the mortgage rate today says that for $100,000 worth of mortgage, it costs around $550 to $600. So if you have one person living in the house at $550, that's equivalent to $100,000 a mortgage. So you're, in essence, reducing the cost of home ownership, and that's why I thought it was a good incentive for, to increase homeowner occupancy percentage in those neighborhoods, and we voted that down. So I guess my main point is, we addressed that a year ago in your session. We have six neighborhoods that need help. Our neighborhood still needs help, and so any help that you can give us is what we need.
Thank you, Dennis. And I look forward to your ideas coming forward. I also would remind you that, you know, you, I believe, have permission to have four rumors in your house under BZA approval. Even if that had gone through, you would still need to go back to BZA for four rumors. That was only a proposal to deal with a second rumor by administrative process rather than BZA approval. Anybody else wish to address the city on any matter? If not, I think we have a matter for closed session.
We do.
Mr. Mayor, I move to go into closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia, for the purpose of discussing one personnel matter per Subparagraph 1 concerning boards and commissions.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please? Ms. Scott?
Ms. Newtonson?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Farley?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
We'll have a five-minute recess.